The pump propeller is rusted out and some of our plumbing in our trucks rusted out. And then we've also found copper inside the oil, which means the ring, so the bottom half of the motor would probably have to be rebuilt within the next. That one could probably maybe last another year, but while we're tearing the pump out, it makes sense to do the bottom half of the motor while it's already there. So repairs were coming in about $46,000 to repair all this. And that truck is also at its end of life. It's 23 years old now. Normally, we don't keep trucks past 20 years. And so I was able to locate a used truck, and it's actually on its way, so we can at least look at it. And they've got it for $49,000. And I've kind of negotiated with them a little bit. If we don't take their one-year warranty that they put on this thing, potentially, we could pick this up for $35,000. It has half the miles. Our current engine has 106,000 road miles. This one has 53,000 road miles. Our current engine has about 61,000 hour miles on the motor. This truck has about 1,100 hours less. And when you calculate the engine hours with the road miles, that engine we currently have out there has 386,000 miles on the motor. That motor, the top end's been rebuilt twice. We've gone through three transmissions, and this will be the second bottom end built on this truck. So it kind of tells you, this thing's really on its last leg, and I don't know how much longer we try to keep her alive. So my recommendation is to seriously look at this other engine, which, talking with the seller, which is a very reputable seller, and I've also got a mechanic that's willing to look at it. We can pull this off for $35,000 and make small repairs to it. I think it might be well worth a look.
Do you guys, does the mayor and council have any thoughts, input, how you'd like us to handle that? Do you want us to look at doing? Are you okay with that? Would you rather try and repair? Any thoughts or feelings there?
I think Chief Shali's dead on, so full support from me.
I support that also. I think it's dead horse, so.
Yeah, definitely. Thanks for all you're doing to keep it going.
Yeah, I agree with that. But I wish we could not let things get so old. Maybe come up with an earlier replacement combined with a sale on the used market instead of sitting with the dogs and trying to make do.
Yeah, we're, I think, have that down, like Cody was saying. We're looking at this 10-year replacement where we'll roll this engine we're currently running into reserve, which will be a very good reserve for us still at that 10-year mark. And that's generally where you want to go with the size of department and call volume that we're doing. We wouldn't want it to go over 20 years, and I think we're on that track. Yeah, this one for sure has gone too long, and that's been kind of catch-up. Me and Cody's talked about this quite a bit. We've been in catch-up mode on some of our apparatus now for the time I've been here. I don't love buying new engine or old engines like this. I think this is probably one that we can squeeze that seven years out of, especially for this price. But I know we'll be repairing more on this older engine and probably not make the seven years. So we at least have a chance with this other one, I believe.
And that, we are trying to do that. Unfortunately, due to prior management and things, his department was probably in the worst shape as far as putting his equipment goes. And so that's where we are trying to get on that schedule where we replace it every 10 years with this fire truck. And then the old one is in a backup status for about 10 years, and then it goes down the road, and the new one becomes the backup, and we buy another one. So we're headed that direction. We just kind of got derailed a little bit making it to that 10 years.
I'm also trying to work pretty hard on getting this old engine sold, and right now I'm getting people back that we should still be able to pull somewhere between $10,000 and $20,000 out of that old engine. So hopefully, we can squeeze that out, too, and have a minimal switch-over cost and bridge this gap for us.
We got your back, chief.
So we'll probably bring that as a budget amendment sooner than later, just where he's identified that new one, and probably need to take action sooner than later. So we've got it on here for 2022, but more than likely, you'll see that at an upcoming city council meeting. Any other questions with the fire department before we move on?
I just wanted to commend Chief Shali for doing a great job on doing that horse trading like that. He bird dogged that thing for us and really came up with a great solution. It was kind of a no-win situation with it, and the chief really came through strong for us. And he's going to get us a vehicle that's going to last us the next few years. He's promised no breakdowns, no problems, no flat tires, no engine issues for the next six or seven years. So based on that, I think we can all move forward in good, strong faith. And again, just wanted to commend chief for doing such a great job on that.
Thanks. And really, until we get it on the lift and truly look at this thing, we're not 100% committed to it, but so far, everything looks pretty positive. We're even going to switch the tires off the old one that we just bought two years ago and put it on this one, so we're going to try to salvage that as well.
Moving forward to parks and trails. If you remember last year with COVID, we ended up pulling a lot of our capital items, so there wasn't much there for parks and trails. This year, just under a normal rotation, we try to do exactly what councillor Hillen talked about and rotate some of those other pieces of equipment. And so it's time to rotate one of the tracks in the parks and trails department. Currently, I believe they have a Colorado they'd like to switch to a full-size. It really doesn't cost as much more, and they end up using some of those tracks to haul garbage cans and various things around, and having a full-size just works a lot better. So we've got that on there for $40,000. And then one of their grasshopper, lawnmower, same kind of thing at $25,000. And that's the main capital items in parks and trails for 2022 that we're tracking at this point. Within police, it's time that some of the body cameras be replaced. In talking to Scott, we put $35,000 in there as a placeholder. He said that the company watch guard that we use for our body cameras right now, they just came out with a new model not a long time ago, and he's trying to decide if we want to go with that or if we want to hold off just a little bit longer to make sure that all the bugs and keeps are worked out of that. So we have it on here to go in the 2022 budget. There's a possibility that we might bump that to 2023, but we wanted it in there as a placeholder for the budget. Also, if you remember last year, we talked about evidence storage. If you remember, they end up with a lot of items that they have to keep track of and store, and that has increased over recent years. And so we had $20,000 in there for possibly a shed or some other options, remodeling some of his building to allow him to use a different space. And so we just put that back into the budget this year where we bumped it with COVID. In the current year, we did have some, their exercise equipment was really old and in really poor shape, so we had $20,000, and they've replaced that equipment and have a lot better equipment there. And then another item that we have in the current year is $150,000 for the police station remodel. That building, I believe it's 20 years old, and it hasn't ever been remodeled since it was constructed. And so what they'd like to do is replace the carpeting, repaint it. They have some cabinetry that's really need to have replaced some of it, possibly some furniture, and just a few things like that. And so this $150,000 was just an estimate of what we thought that that might cost in doing some of those repairs and looking at bids, but they would like to do that during 2022 if the council saw that. And so those are the things that we're tracking this year for the police department for the budget. I don't know if anybody has any questions, comments.
Chief Brinkman could follow Chief Shali's lead and look for some used furniture.
How about used carpet?
Got a whole office full of it. Not a good sell. I sell it to Jared.
Yeah, I've seen that furniture. I don't want it.
Yeah, we're 27 years in this building, and our offices have the original carpet. The hallway was replaced, but it's really quite embarrassing. It's pretty bad, so we just want to try and freshen it up, make it look a little bit better. And other than that, the body cameras, I can't decide on that yet. I'm a little bit leery at this point whether we just continue warranty that we have and wait. I don't want to buy this new technology and not have it work out very well. And so we'll look at that over the next month and get determination whether we want to continue forward or just do what we've been doing for the next year.
Well, chief and Cody, wasn't there body camera storage issues, like for all your footage servers and stuff I concerned with a while ago?
Originally, when we bought them, we had the option. I think what you're talking about is we could either buy storage from them, or when we bought those last servers, we just built into them storage capacity. And so we should be okay. Over time, if we get where we keep more and more video, we might need to expand that, but I believe for the time being, we're okay. Is that correct, Scott?
Yeah, as far as, when I've talked with ETS, we've been doing fine with their storage, so it's worked really well. You get into paying some of those storage costs with some of these companies, outrageous what you have to pay. So so far, it worked well. It's met our needs for our retention of video.
Any other questions for Chief Brinkman before we move on? Pass, please. All right, the sewer funds. So if you remember, the enterprise funds, usually we bring you an update either at this meeting and the second strategic planning meeting. Because we're doing this meeting a little bit sooner and with COVID and those kind of things, in talking to Sean, we're not exactly sure which funds or if any that will have increases. If you remember, we've never had an increase in stormwater. And we talked to you last year about that perhaps we'd have one for 2022. We're going to look at some of those things. And then garbage, you know, we're always dependent upon weight cog and what those things do. So we'll keep tracking that, and at that next strategic planning meeting following the budget tentative adoption, we'll go over if there's any enterprise funds increases of that time. But our methodology is unchanged. We just really try and tie that back to any increases that we have, whether that's from Central Weaver or the transfer station or those kind of things. As far as sewer projects go, if you remember, what we've been doing is Sean's been videoing the sewer lines, and then they just identify projects based upon that and based upon road projects. We've got $300,000 in the current year budget and $300,000 in 2022 for those type of projects. And there's also one truck that, once again, is just the normal rotation that needs to be replaced in the sewer fund. And that's everything we're tracking in the sewer fund. For stormwater, same kind of thing. We just have $200,000 for projects this year and for next year, and it would just be based upon those projects, whatever's identified. As far as streets go, we have a few more things in there. One of their big freightliner dump trucks that they use both to haul and for snow removal, it's time to replace one of those. And unfortunately, they're fairly expensive, so we have one of those on there for $250,000. We also have, and this is a question we wanted to talk to you guys about, we had been putting some money in the budget every year for roundabout improvements. So we've done those. We put $100,000 in there this year, and we just wanted to run that past the council and mayor and see if you wanted us to continue to do some of those improvements. I think we talked in the past about continuing at like 300 and some of the other roundabouts. So I don't know if you have any guidance for Sean and for the budget in that regard. And Sean, I don't know if you have anything to add.
So pretty much on the roundabouts, we feel like we're pretty much done, other than the one on 4400 and Parker Drive. That one's relatively small and don't have much room for a whole lot, but we would like to kind of go ahead with that one. And then you had mentioned 300 West, and I don't know what your thoughts are on that as well.
Cody, Sean, my thoughts, and I'll probably get a book thrown at the back of my head, but if we could take some sort of money from somewhere and start looking at like a pickleball complex or something like that to throw it out there. Pickleball's really picked up, and if you go to some of the complexes that they've put in around, like down in West Haven, you know, it's super nice. And I think if there's a better way to spend that type of money to do it like that, so just to throw it out there.
I'm on board with that, too. That's on my list of things to talk about, because I get asked about that probably more than any other thing in the city right now. I mean, we got people, this is crazy to say, and I think they've kind of shut it down, but people were using the church, you know, on Parker. Yeah, even during the COVID time and stuff, like they're just, pickleball's just picked up like crazy. And so I know it's expensive, and we don't really know where we want to even put it, but yeah, that's something we probably needed to discuss.
They're still using the churches throughout the state.
They are still using them?
Yeah, second and fourth ward.
Yeah, it's actually a problem that is discussed every high council meeting type thing, so kind of like everyone, so.
So it sounds like, are you okay? I think we've got a little tiny bit, Sean and I looked at this the other day, we have a little bit of money left in the budget. Is it okay if we go ahead with those 4400 South, that one last roundabout and get it cleaned up, too? And then it sounds like you don't want to do any others at this time, is that right?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I'm good, too.
Okay.
Hey, got one comment, Cody K.
Yep.
2022, we've got funding coming for that new roundabout, Ritter Drive and 1050 West, South Weaver Drive, that new one that's projected there. We're supposed to get $500, $500,000, I'm sorry, from CMAC funds. That's for air quality. We're getting for that, we put in for a few years ago. I think it's been estimated, I don't know, Sean, or total estimates, but I believe it's been, what, 600,000 plus to do that roundabout because of the peculiarities of it. So I don't know whether we're setting aside some Prop 1 funds or what's planned there, but I just wonder if something needs to be in future budget for that.
So we currently don't have anything else put away from that. Roger kind of was spearheading that. I have not seen a true cost estimate on it. I know he had talked about 600,000, which we could easily cover next year with our local auction money. I would assume that's where we'd take it out of. We're still working on that. We should get a better, I would think we'd get a better feel once they get the design finalized, we could get some prices and then look at it for that next year's budget.
Yeah. They even said, they've told me it was, that's from regional council, if that design was to get finished early, that there's a chance of getting the funding early, too. Maybe we don't want it, but just so you're aware of that. They said if the projects come in early, the money's there, and other projects aren't ready, then they go ahead with projects that are off in the next year.
Okay.
What's the cost of the bridge over in the roundabout behind Sam's Club compared to that? I mean, the need, well, maybe I shouldn't say need, but my perceived need versus a want. I don't see the dollar value for that roundabout there. If we have the money to put in somewhere that somebody could help us put that bridge in, I think that would help long run better than a roundabout. I'm not saying that, I'm not trying to change the world. I'm just saying, just from my viewpoint.
You might be a day late and a dollar short, because that's pretty well planned, and that $500,000, you'd probably be giving that back, wouldn't use it. So I don't know that you'd gain a whole lot. I think there's a lot of benefits to the roundabout, what we've seen, and we have continued to increase traffic. I know there's resistance from some folks, but yeah, that's a good idea, but you can't use that money for something else, so. Especially where it's not air quality related. If it was, you might could do that. The bridge probably won't. In fact, that bridge that's going, you're talking about the road bridge that's going in?
Yes, sir.
I think Bock has to pay for a good share of that. You correct me, Bill, if I'm wrong on that.
No, that sounds right to me.
Well, then, we have to put in a portion of the road on the other side when that comes to fruition, right?
Yeah, we'll bring the road down from the north, and Mike, you can help me if I'm wrong here on this, but their responsibility is to bring it over from the roundabout to their development and from their development over to our road.
That's correct. We're committed to connecting the road and the water line to where they come across the river. That is correct. And they'll pay for the rest of that on their responsibility. Yeah.
This, Sean, so we are currently doing design on that road right now, so that we have our design. We have, we put it in where we want it, not where they want it. So we'll be bringing you something to go out and bid on that here shortly, hopefully, on that portion of it.
That's fine.
So on all those projects we just talked about, that will be paid for out of like our Class C road funds and our local option. And those numbers are just based upon estimates. I reconcile those based upon what we have left over versus what we're budgeting to gain during the current, you know, during 2022 in revenues. And so those are just placeholders, but some of those projects would qualify for those items there, and that's why they're not specifically listed. So that's all of the streets, unless anybody else has any questions or input or... The water fund, just as kind of an update, too, if you remember, we've been working with Weaver Basin Water on giving them to treat some of our surface water shares. We received some of the documentation back, and they're working with the state on giving that change of diversion. And so hopefully, we'll have more information. That's part of the reason we want to wait on the water rate is because that will have a big impact there, but there is progress there. As far as projects go, we have $500,000 in the current year and in 2022 for water line projects, same kind of thing based upon whatever the engineers and Sean and road projects, whatever the highest needs are there. We had budgeted $80,000 in the current year for some state upgrades. We want to put $60,000 in 2022 just to replace some old skate hay equipment and keep that rolling. We also have replace one vehicle, Ford F-150, and that's just kind of the normal rotation of $50,000. And there's a chance we might put that in a different fund. We look at that based upon employees and things, but it's jumped around a little bit, so that could end up in the garbage fund, just based upon where the utilization of that piece of equipment is. The only other update there on the water fund that I'm aware of, about a year ago, we bought that fixed base meter reading system. We got that on place on the Wi-Fi tower, and they use that to do the meter reads this month. We're able to read a large portion of the meters throughout the city without one unit. So in the future, and after we kind of have a better idea how much coverage we have and where we're missing, we'll perhaps look at adding a second one of those to finish that and get as much coverage as possible and redundancy, but that's allowed or will allow us to pull data in real time right off all the water meters without having to go out into the field. So that's everything for water. That's really everything associated with the city for enterprise funds or the general fund. If you don't have any other questions, the one thing we did add on here last year was the senior housing facility, just so we could track some of those costs. We pulled everything for the current year, and so we don't have anything in there for 2021. For 2022, we put some of the equipment in there. If you remember, that facility's about 15 or 16 years old now, and I believe it'll be 16 years old in May or June. And so we put $10,000 in there for kitchen appliances. Some of those are just starting to get old, and so far, we've been able to fix most those, but at some point, some of that's going to start going bad. And so we had some of that in future years, but we thought we might need a little bit during 2022. We also put $50,000 in there, and if you remember this, will come out of the hard day funds, but to clear up the landscaping, it's looking pretty rough over there. And we just thought, you know, that project at the civic center has turned out really well. We were able to do quite a bit, and it's really freshened that up. And we thought, well, right now, there's a lot less utilization and it'd be easier to go in there and clean that up. So that was Sean's idea, and we just threw that in there. We just kind of wanted to get you guys' feel. That really doesn't take away from any other money, because that money is just restricted there for that facility. I don't know what the, I guess in this case, the RDA boards' views are on that.
You put in a pickleball court in the front of that building?
Tried to put a pickleball court in out back over there quite a few years ago, and they actually, they voted the board they didn't want. Sean even had it all drawn out there.
I just, I don't know if this is the right place to say, with it being the senior housing. I just wanted to give a shout out to Chris Stone, because, so a week ago, Sunday, eight o'clock in the morning and after the snowstorm, he was out there shoveling the snow. So Sunday morning, eight o'clock, he's out there kind of taking care of that facility. So I thought that was pretty awesome. I wanted him to be recognized for that.
He is really dedicated when it comes to that. He hates it when it snows on weekends or holidays, but it is good to get the snow removed. So, well, if you guys are okay with that, we'll plan on leaving that $50,000 in there for that landscaping and see what we can get in hand and kind of clean up the face of that facility. Just as way of note, if you remember, we've been talking about this for several years, but that funding, it does actually, it did actually end as of a tax year, as of December 31st of 2020. And so we won't be collecting any additional RDA increment. If you remember, we collect that off the 1050 and then transfer it to the senior housing facility. We won't have any increases there. So what we have is what we have, and as long as it lasts, as long as it lasts. And, you know, as we've talked in the past, a lot of times, the grants and things do cover a large portion of that facility, but a lot of the capital that we paid for historically out of those RDA funds, we'll have to make sure that we're careful with those. But we felt like this was a good use, and we'd kind of clean up that facility and make it a little nicer. So that's really all that I have with the capital improvements and the enterprise funds with the motor pool and the IT fund. We've kind of talked about those. That just trickles down. And the RDA funds, so that kind of wraps up all the budget issues, unless anybody has anything else that we need to talk about. So I guess at this point, I'll just turn the time back over to the mayor for the... issues unless anybody has anything else that we need to talk about. So I guess at this point, I'll just turn the time back over to the mayor for the.
Okay, how about enterprise? We already, you looked at, that was for capital improvements, wasn't it? Do you want to do the enterprise funds now, Cody or Bill?
I think we're good on those. We'll go through those in more detail in May and once we know, have a better idea on the rates. Same thing I did with the motor pool and IT fund and RDAs. We've kind of went through all of those with our capital items and what we're tentatively tracking at this point. So I think we're really, we're probably to Steve's training on putting in public meetings unless anybody has anything to add for budgets.
Again, I just want to commend Cody for putting all this together. All the department heads have been fantastic at getting information over to Cody so that we can get these preliminary numbers in, the budget. And, you know, Cody's done a fantastic job. You know, this is the kind of quality work that we expect from Cody, but this is really very amazing that he's been able to pull this together like this. And he's just always staying on top of things to make sure that these funds get used appropriately. So again, just wanted to say thank you to Cody for a job well done.
Hey, I had something real quick. I wasn't sure where to, where to put it in. There's kind of two issues that are a little bit tied together, but I was wondering if there's any way that we could maybe start to move towards automating our water bills a little bit. Maybe with, with an email system and I had a resident come to me that had a water bill last year that got, this is, this is kind of how the discussion got started, but he had a water bill that he didn't see. And so the next month, he saw he had a balance due, so he just paid both water bills and figured everything was good. And then a little bit later, he got a late fee. And this is actually a former council, council member, and he, when he went to look at the, the process to kind of get that waived, he was kind of surprised that he had to come before the city council to get it waived and a little bit frustrated. Felt like maybe somebody at the city, you know, at the city level should be able to have a little bit of judgment. Probably been in the city for 25 years. He said he's never been late once. And just felt kind of frustrated that he had to come before the, the council to get that waived. And he, he also was just kind of bringing up some, maybe it's time to change some of our billing practices, maybe where there's an email involved. I know the state had a pretty bumpy rollout on their tax, you know, the vehicle registration stuff, so we'd want to steer clear of something like that. But I just wonder if we could look into maybe upgrading the way we do that a little bit different. Maybe, maybe mailing stuff out every month is, is something we could maybe start to move away from a little bit.
So we already have an email option. He just has to sign up. We have like a paperless option. If you sign up through Express Bill Pay, you can set up an account there and you can log in, you can access it, you can place it, you can see when your bill's due, you can pay it online. So we really have all those kind of things in place already. It's just getting signed up in that manner. He can actually stay where it's a mailed statement and use Express Bill Pay and log in. Steve can correct me if I'm wrong. The reason it reads that in city code is nobody, even the mayor, really has the authority to waive those fees other than the governing body, which is the council. And so really, none of us as city staff have the authority to do that where that is a fee enacted by the city council. And so that's why our default answer is, you know, if you have a question or a problem about it, you got to talk to the city council because really you as the governing body have the authority to waive that fee.
So I'll just add two cents worth on Express Pay. That's how I pay my water bill. It just automatically, Express Pay just automatically charges my Visa each month. I get my statement electronically. It's slick, Brayden.
That's how I do mine too. We have like an ACH option?
Yeah, you, you can choose to pay with ACH.
Yep, we do. If you're late, then you get kicked off, but we have any, so you can really pay a whole bunch of different ways. You can pay through Express Bill Pay, you can use your bank pay, you can sign up for the city ACH, or you can pay it through the mail, or you can come in and pay at the city office, you can call us, pay over the phone. So we really offer about everything. It's just people taking responsibility on the backend.
Wow. Yeah, I didn't realize we offered everything like that. So, do you get an email, if you sign up for the email, do you get an email bill each month?
So I think that comes through Express Bill Pay. I live in a different city, but I utilize Express Bill Pay, and that's how I'm signed up. And I believe I get an email every month from Express Bill Pay saying that I have a bill there.
And a notification paid and a notification of the next bill that's upcoming.
Any charge for Express Bill Pay?
Sorry, Brayden, what was that?
We don't class any fees on. So, you know, we've talked to the council about that historically, but right now, we don't charge anything as the city to pay through Express Bill Pay. So it's really a free option. The merchant fees, we've just been covering. You know, we've talked to the council before in the past about having like a fee associated with that, and some entities do that, but at Riverdale, we do not. So it's totally free option.
So an Express Bill Pay, is that something, that's through the city or is it through your, through your bank or credit union?
It's through the city. It actually integrates with our city's accounting software, and so they talk to each other. And so it's just a vendor that basically provides the merchant services and the platform to house utility payments for municipalities throughout the U.S.
So Brayden, that's the city pulling the money with, if you want to control it at the city, but if you choose to push the money at the city, you can do it through your bill pay at your bank.
Well, that's, that's fantastic. I appreciate you guys. I mean, you guys are way on top of it, it sounds like. And I'll just kind of get back to him. And, and I kind of knew that the, there's a problem with giving the authority to waive fees. Like, I'm sure Steve Brooks is just kind of keeping his mouth shut for a minute, because he gives somebody the authority to waive fees and that, that's just trouble waiting to happen. But I just want to tell him that I talked to you guys, and this is great information as far as all the options. So, thank you.
Brayden, we could, this Sean again, we could run that again, like, we usually run that stuff in the newsletter. Now, we could put something back out again on the services we offer too.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful. I think that'd be really, that's a great idea, Sean. Thank you.
Hey, Steve, do you want to do your training?
Sure. Just follow up to that, Brayden. We get asked every day for somebody to waive something, so just so you know. And we just don't do it. I mean, it is, it is what it is. So, I know you guys are all excited. This is the highlight of the meeting right here, since we don't do this very often. But have y'all seen that show Groundhog's Day with Bill Murray? How he repeats that day over and over and over again? That's how I feel about open meetings training. And I know you guys do too. It's, it, there's only so much I can say, but it's, it's interesting if you think about it. I think it's 524104 under state code requires this to be done. The chief executive officer has to make sure that you all receive a training every year. And, and our audit asks, Cody gets hit up with that every year. So, and the only reason I bring that up is because I think it's important that we realize very few of the things we do are state mandated, but this is one of them. So it's a big deal. And so we need to be careful. A lot of the stuff in the statute is covered primarily by staff, you know, notices, agendas, posting, minutes, all that kind of stuff. So you guys never really have to worry about it, the stuff. And, and the city does a really good job with that. We watch that, you know, there's lots of people that have their hands in that thing. And we rarely miss a lot of those kind of things. So we're good about that. What really falls on your shoulders, even though ultimately all of it does, but it's mainly the meeting itself. And so, like I said, I think we're really good at, and even in our meetings, we're a lot better than we used to be. The one thing that I bring up every year, and I always will, is, is straying from the agenda. And I know sometimes you guys get frustrated because you want information and you want updates and things like that. And little stuff like that's okay. What, what we can't do is start discussing them. And that's where we start getting in trouble. And, and that discretionary portion like that, I mean, that's ideally designed for, let, let's say something comes up during the meeting that you want discussed in a city council meeting. Well, we can't discuss it because it's not on the agenda. And I know it's frustrating to you, but that's where the discretionary portion would be most appropriate is, is then you would bring it up. And you have to remember that at least one other city council member has to agree with you. But that's the time when you would bring that up and say, I would like to discuss this particular item. And then if somebody joins in with you, or if the mayor joins in with you, then, then we have a green light. But it's not to discuss it. All it is, is to put it on an agenda for a future time when we can discuss it and give it all the, the proper notifications. Or, you know, community events, like Brent brings up every year, the, the lion spaghetti dinner and stuff like that, that's when we use discretionary as those kind of things. But it shouldn't, it shouldn't be used. And I know it's a little bit different because it's a little tempting, I think, when we're in these electronic meetings that we, we can stray a little bit, but we still can. It's no different whether we're in electronic meetings or we're there present. If it's not on an agenda, we shouldn't talk about it. That's what's going to get us in trouble. And, and not just on the agenda, but it has to be listed specifically. And like, I'll just give you an example that happened yesterday, and it's nobody's fault. It's just where we're there at different times and stuff like that. But I, I looked at the agenda yesterday morning, and we didn't have this list, well, we didn't have this next item on there, the, the real property discussion. And when I was talking to a couple people, they said, well, we have a miscellaneous clause on there and we can just bring it up in that. And that's when I said, no, that's a perfect example of something we can't do because it's not specific enough to lead to a discussion on that. And so if you look at, let's say someone, and, and I know this is a fact, there's a Realtor who has a buyer for a piece of property there on Ritter Drive, our piece of property right now. Well, when an agenda just says miscellaneous, it wouldn't give anybody notice that we're going to bring that up and talk about it. So that right there makes it illegal if we, if we tried to talk about it. And so fortunately, fortunately, it was early enough in the day that we could amend that agenda and get it on there and then we're okay. But those are just the kind of things that, I mean, it has to be on there. It has to be really clear. And, and I say this every year, just remember that we conduct public business in public. If you do that, we'll be safe. It's, it's never going to be an issue. But if you try to do anything without the public either knowing specifically or at least having that opportunity to know, then that's when we're going to get in trouble. So any private meetings or anything like that that nobody would know about or topics and things, just don't do it. That's where we're going to get in trouble. So, anybody got any questions? I don't know that I'm going to get any, into anything more. I mean, really, that's the only things we run into that we would have issues with. And you guys are pretty good for the most part, but every once in a while, we do get, we get wandering and, and, you know, we have to call you back or we try not to, to get too deep into it, but.
Hey, Steve?
Yeah.
Just, just one comment. And you and I have talked about this a lot, but a lot of times when we're in council meeting and just, just so you verify yes, no. But when somebody comes in for like a rezone and we're asking information in the, the meeting, that's not appropriate. Like, what's this going to be used for? Looking down the road or something like that in the council meeting, that's not appropriate. And, I mean, we need to recognize that.
Right, right. And yeah, and that's not so much an open meetings issue as it's just the topic. Again, if you're looking at the agenda, what does the agenda say? The agenda is what tells you you can't talk about. To start getting into other things and future projections and stuff like that, we just don't want to go there. It's just, it's not appropriate and it's really not our business. I mean, we look at the code, what the code says, and we follow that. That's what we do. It's not, you know, does this guy have finances and things like that? I mean, these might be some variables we, we can at least discuss in some situations, but it's usually not going to be the case. So, but yeah, you're correct on that, Alan. Any other questions or comments anybody has for me? I mean, you're welcome to look at it. Like I said, the bulk of this, it's, it's a number of pages long, the Open Meetings Act, but most of it's going to fall on our shoulders as staff. And you just need to be careful on, on what you do in a meeting. That's the main thing that, that we would run into problems with. And make sure you're not having meetings off the site. I bring this one up too quite often. You know, we live in this electronic age and it's very easy to send texts and stuff like that. And technically, it's not a violation because we don't have a quorum present, but I don't want to be the first person that's going to get challenged on that. And I don't think you want to be either, because if somebody takes that to court one of these days and challenges a couple city council members that are texting back and forth behind the scenes, I think you'll lose. Because if nothing else, it violates the spirit of the statute, because you're conducting business and it's not in a public forum. So be careful with that too. I mean, general communications, you're probably okay, but just be very, very careful with that kind of stuff. Any other questions for me?
Thanks, Steve.
If not, I think that's all I had, Mayor. And Cody can report back to our auditors that we're clear and good. I'll meet with the planning commission, Mike, too, anytime you want, and we'll discuss with them. They're a little bit less knowledgeable because they change a little bit more, and they're not as versed on these things. And so we try to keep them informed of this kind of stuff too and make sure that's covered, just so we're doing it for everybody, because it applies to them. So just let me know when you want me to come in, Mike.
Thank you, Steve, for that. Appreciate it. We've got one action item on the agenda tonight. I think you remembered our last city council meeting, we, we tabled an item, and it was asked to move that to the strategic planning meeting. It's been put on the agenda tonight. It's discussion consideration of resolution 2021-01, declaring real property at 1570 West Ritter Drive as surplus. Sean Douglas presented this. I'd like to, wanted your thoughts on consideration on selling this property. If we want to discuss that, we'd need to first have a motion to untable
Can I say something here, Mayor?
Go ahead.
If we're getting stuck on this. If, if you read the, the resolution itself, the mere fact that we declare this as surplus doesn't mean we're going to sell it or really do anything with it. But by statute, when it involves real property, land like this, then we can't do anything until you declare it surplus. And so that's why we were asking for that. And then at that point, the statute gives the mayor the authority to do things. Doesn't mean we'll sell it. We could trade it, all kinds of stuff, but the council has to okay that at some point in time that, yeah, we're not going to use that for city purposes. And so declare it surplus, and then it gives staff some options to work with it. And so that's what we were asking for. It wasn't like we were going to sell it. It doesn't mean that we'll do anything with it, other than we have your blessing at this point that we can do stuff with it. So then it gives us a little bit of leeway. So that's what that, that's how that statute reads. It doesn't mean that anything's going to happen. In fact, we wouldn't do it until we knew, you know, development issues and things like that, what would be the, in the, in the best interest of the city. Then we would be coming back to you again and say, this is what we're looking at. Are you guys okay with it? So just declaring surplus doesn't do a whole lot other than it, it complies with the statute, and it's the first thing that's required, so.
Okay. Do we have a motion untabled?
That's, I, I just, I would actually like to keep it as is until we get a chance. I don't know, Mike, if we are going to meet with the planning commission to talk about the general plan or something like that first. I think that, that's kind of what I was talking about with the strategic plan is to kind of figure out what, what we see is that whole area developing into and just, just keeping that in the pocketbook until we actually sit down and say, what, what do we see this thing becoming? And, and restrict the, you know, discussions and pressures to sell it prior to, you know, sitting down with the planning commission and talking about the general plan and getting that taken care of before we jump into anything. That's, that's just what I was thinking.
Okay. Mr. Arnold would like to just keep it like it is. Do we have a consensus to do that?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Yeah, since it was brought up by Commissioner or Councilman Arnold, the last meeting to specifically discuss it at this meeting, I'd like to move that we untable the decision and consideration of resolution 2021-1, declaring real property at 1570 West Ritter Drive as surplus.
Thank you, Councilor Stevens. Do we have a second on the motion? Okay, the motion dies for lack of a second. Just leave it where it is. Just leave it where it is. Do we have anything else tonight?
I had one thing.
Go ahead.
Since we're kind of kind of doing our city council thing a little bit, it's a little bit of a discretionary thing, but we had a, a couple of young men in uh, in, in Riverdale that uh, kind of saw that uh, one of their neighbors, RV was on fire. And uh, so they jumped into action and ran over and got it put out. And uh, I think Chief Charlie still ended up, I think the fire department still ended up rolling out on that, but uh, anyway, it's kind of cool. One of the guys has already taken a lot of the wildland uh, fire courses and that's what he wants to do. And uh, I was wondering if maybe we could recognize them somehow uh, for, for what they did.
Okay. Why don't you uh, get with me, send me a text or give me a call. We can talk about it.
Okay. Chief Charlie, do you know anything about that?
I know the guys went out on it, but I wasn't 100% who put it out, who even attacked it first, but I know the guys did go out and finish it.
And yeah, I mean, maybe they put it out, but these guys saw it while they were driving by and, and.
Let me go back and look at the report and just see if there's anything in the report that shows that.
Okay. Yeah. Before we do anything, um, I, the discussion on Facebook about it and so um, and I just happen to know some of the parents. And so I started asking about it, but yeah, maybe we need to get that to the mayor too. And I'll get you their names, Mayor and stuff.
Okay, super. All right. Anything else for this meeting? We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?